Every evening, as long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwokikapiamah must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukwu Okike Abiyama who decided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old, our Father who art in heaven. That your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening, we offer these your children unto thee all over this very planet that you created. They are listening across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet. We are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onye primi henin that this very gospel must be preached, that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year, we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 30th of August, as we are being failed by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you, to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwa Abiyama believe go whiter than white and whiter than snow. Is there any way that we have seen that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word, which was spoken thousands of years ago, that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth will cease to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukwokikapiamah, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweh Heshua, who came here and said, "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end, we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be ralphed in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succour to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children, the ethics and the bibios, the ison, the shekiri, the isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, we will dance on these streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra, that your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for. In no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. I lead indigenous people of Biafra, Ibiobi. So also do I command the armies of Biafra. They are fiercely loyal. They are loyal, I tell you, and doing the work that I expect them to do. I also direct radio Biafra, not through any power which I possess or any extraordinary knowledge, but by your grace, oh Lord. We honor you and we adore you. I know that some people listening, including the British, may not understand what we are doing. But there is nobody in Britain that answers Nwachuku, the child of heaven. We do. Therefore, when we worship our Father, people should not try to be jealous. They should not feign ignorance or misunderstanding because we are ancient people. We have been doing this for over 5,000 years and will continue to do so until the end of time.
The time is now, we want to go. Remember your promises. Tell me what we do, everybody want to kill us. They want to take what belong to us. We deliver our neighbor, so we deliver ourselves too. So it is written in the holy book. The land of rising sun is our hope. Because. Papa, Biko Mele. Any na yongi biko nu. Iwele.
Those who are asking, "Did you say Biafra will come in 2023?" Biafra has been restored already. What is remaining is a complete declaration that will be defended. And before that happen, there are many things that we need to put in place. I want you to recount the achievement of the Biafra Republic government in exile under the leadership of Simon Ekba, what we have achieved in 2023 and ask yourself that question again. And you will look very stupid. We have been able to form government in exile in 2023. In 2023, we have formed the de facto government. In 2023, we have launched Biafra Liberation Army. In 2023, we launched Biafra Navy. We launched Biafra Air Force. We launched the forces of Biafra. In 2023, we adopted Helsinki Declaration, which is the constitution of Biafra. In 2023, we had a convention in Finland where Biafra people gathered from all over the world as delegates to vote on the Biafra Charter, which is a living document subjected to amendment. In 2023, we have created 40 states of Biafra. And believe me, many more states will come because we are not done yet. In 2023, not only that we created state, we also brought a redesigned and redrawn Biafra map to reflect the current situation and the current demography of Biafra. In 2023, we started engaging officially Nigeria state in a guerrilla warfare on self-defense. In 2023, we officially and publicly engage Nigeria terrorist army and we are neutralizing them on daily basis. It has never happened before in the history of Biafra after the war. In 2023, we publicly and openly made sure that Nigeria doesn't kill again in Biafra land and go free. So if you look at those things I've mentioned and those wars I've not even mentioned, are you still going to challenge Simon Ekba that Biafra has not been restored in 2023? Biafra Declaration is not about mouth pronouncement. It's about putting every structure in place. It's about putting every mechanism and measures in place to shaping the map and the structure of Biafra. In 2023, we have designed the economic viability of Biafra. In 2023, we have kicked off the Biafra Open Development Project. In 2023, we've made a lot of impact globally. In 2023, the Biafra awareness gained the highest momentum in the history of Biafra since after the war. In 2023, we made the Nigeria terrorist army to cry on the floor of National Assembly. It has never happened in the history of Nigeria. In 2023, those who are serving as the agent of Nigeria, benefiting from the corrupt entity called Nigeria, openly called for persecution, execution and the kidnapping and arresting of Simon Ekba because they know that this is a different thing from what they have seen in their entire lives. In 2023, they called for the arrest of Simon Ekba and called for the release of Mazinamdekanu, Confucian. In 2023, after they have used many years to plan the kidnapping of Mazinamdekanu, they have come to say Mazinamdekanu is a saint. He's a very gentleman, he's a nice person. But just two years ago, they kidnapped this nice person from Kenya. Two years ago, they tortured him for eight days. Two years ago, he was an evil man. Two years ago, they called him terrorist. Two years ago, he was everything evil to them. Two years ago, they spent hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. They kidnapped him and put him into private jet from Kenya to Nigeria. Two years ago, Mazinamdekanu was everything evil to Nigeria, including to Anes and Dibu and all of them. Two years ago, he was the only problem of Nigeria. Two years ago, he was the only person that constituted all manner of insecurity in Nigeria. He was the one who is more deadly than Boko Haram. He was everything that Nigeria don't want to see. Today, as Simon Ekba take the Biafra liberation to the next level, the same people are now calling Mazinamdekanu the most sensible person. These are hypocrites, these are devilish people, these are criminals that only thing they want to do is to give dog a bad name in order to kill it. They have given bad that name to Mazinamdekanu. They themselves were the one who condemned Mazinamdekanu. The same people today, they have seen that, yes indeed, someone actually followed this footsteps of Mazinamdekanu and ready to drag all of them to Biafra land. When we get to Biafra land, we will treat their fuck up very well. Today, the same people who gave the bad name to Mazinamdekanu in order to be kidnapped, they slandered his name, blackmailed him to other ethnic nationalities in Nigeria, all of them today has come to say that Mazinamdekanu is very sensible. Now it is Simon Ekba is the problem. These people who are just evil from birth refuse to understand why Simon Ekba have decided to take this thing upon himself to liberate the people of Biafra who has been subjugated and chained with Islamic state agenda. They found themselves in a hole. They tagged us, thought in a circle because they thought that they have actually systematically conquered everybody by dividing, creating state, dividing us, changing the demography and map of Biafra people. And at the end of the day, they structured out five tiny state, called it Five Eastern States. And they say, "Let us continue to divide them." And now they tell you, "Oh, you are talking about Biafra. You are just five state in the circle." We have come to destroy their evil agenda. Today, you will understand that the plan of the Islamic state has failed. Today, the Biafra people are proudly announcing the 40 state, which is called the United State of Biafra. 40 complete state, cut across board, including in the area where they claim they were never Biafra. I have come to learn from what Biafra did wrong in 1967 to 1970. I have come to learn what Uwazrike did wrong from the time he started the Biafra movement. And I have come to learn what Mazinamdekanu did right and was in the process of doing before the plan had kidnapped him. I continue from there and today, we are where we are. They are not resting. Those IPOB Nigeria are not resting as well. Every given opportunity, they think that there is infight in the Biafra government. They will say, "Oh, their hope now is that they are fighting." And they are hoping that there is infight in the Biafra government. That is to tell you that, like we said, they are cursed. They are cursed and they can never rise again. Biafra government in exile is a government that nobody born of a woman marching on this planet, using your foot to walk on the ground, will ever, ever destroy. Biafra has been restored in 2023. We have a government, we have a structure of the government of Biafra. We have every department that made Biafra government a legitimate government. The people of Biafra are loyal to the government, both in the exile and in the homeland. We have governors, state administrators in all the 40 states of Biafra. We have the deputy governors, which is called administrators. We have the secretary of state of each state in Biafra land. We have the chairman and managers of county and the district. If you do not understand that with this structure we have now, one day you will sleep in Nigeria and wake up in Biafra. It means that you are an idiot. I told you that by the time I finish with Nigeria, you will sleep in Nigeria one day and wake up in Biafra. The next phase is to set up the police of Biafra. The reason why we have not set up the police is because it is going to be state police. Every state will have their police. Every state will be independent. It is going to be local police and there is no interference from the central government of Biafra. The military is a joint military, is one military that will protect the territorial integrity of Biafra. When one state is attacked, it means that you have attacked all of us. So my people, for those who are asking, "When are you going to declare Biafra?" We have already declared Biafra. We are only waiting for us to conclude the last phase of the Biafra government and one day you will sleep and wake up in Biafra, like I said. Then we must capture every cranny of the Biafra.
Odeka mboni wé ombwa. Odeka mboni wé ombwa. Awale wa me tijé, bah Biafrae. Ano zimna Biafra ombwa o. Simon epon, epan joku. Oka mwa. We are in Biafra. And you know on a Biafra. You are God! You are! Do you understand that? You are God! And the other gods you walk with. I did not, I don't expect anything in life. I deal with whatever I see as I see it.
Yes.
I didn't think, I didn't put it into perspective, into any type of perspective, seeing today. And that I am seeing today, I'm experiencing today, Osworum, I, I am content.
Yes.
My, my, oh my goodness, my Prime Minister! There is no name under the earth that fits you! There is no name!
Thank you, thank you, it's alright, I continue from there.
(speaking in Biafra)
Okay, so, uh... We are going now for the national anthem.
(speaking in Biafra) (speaking in Biafra)
Thank you.
Thank you. Please keep standing. Please keep standing.
A minute silence for the heroes passed and the tanks kept now. Masukie, display the other song so that when we are ready, you play it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
May the souls of all our fallen heroes continue to rest in peace. While those of us that are alive and active will continue to make sure that their labor for our freedom was never in vain. Um, we'll do that by making sure that Biafra is restored fully and our territories are all protected by ourselves. He say, he say, he say. BDF anthem, please.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, uh, please, just, uh... So, sorry, I think we have to play it today, I said, I read, yeah. Oh my goodness.
I thought you saved the video, but is everybody still with?
Uh, 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 sorry, just a minute, I think, uh, the video is not clicking, I see, yeah.
We can play it in audio, no problem.
This meeting is being recorded.
Play, play the audio, it was coming out well, then I can just play it, let us hear the sound, please.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Stop sharing your screen, remove your screen and just play. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome, uh, once again today to yet another of Aludho Town Hall meeting with our honourable APM. You are all welcome, fellow Biafrans. As always, I think we will proceed to the next in our agenda. And now we hear the opening prayer. And we are going to invite our onion dude Mazinamdekanu to lead us in an opening prayer.
sit there and we get my money, we can't go. He say, he say, he say.
He say, he say, thank you. Thank you and welcome once again, honorable S. N. The House. You are welcome today, the eleventh of May, two thousand and twenty-five, to another holy fellowship. As always, I believe we all know the purpose why we gather, why we need to gather regularly. The purpose of town hall meetings is as initiated by our Prime Minister. It means to interact with the people, the grassroots, and everyone who may have bothering issues to the governance, to the issues in the state. This is an opportunity to get together, interact, present your ideas, ask questions, and hear directly from the government what they have in place for all of us, for the state. As our situation is, it's not possible for everyone of us to access the internet or the electronic media as the world enters these days. That is why we need always to gather, come together and share our ideas and also to provide solutions to the needs of our gallant men and women. You are welcome to Aludo's first town hall meeting, and we also greet our honorable APM and the rest of you fellow Biafrans. I will, without wasting much of our time, invite the honorable SA, honorable Emeka Oy to present his welcome address. Honorable SA, please take the mic and welcome your guest.
Wow, I'm in trouble with network. We are hearing you loud and clear. We are hearing you loud and clear. Yes, I'm in trouble with network, I just come back, I was disconnected. I just wanted to connect.
Uh, it's, it's, it's timely, it's timely, you know.
All right, thank you, um, I don't know where we are now.
Your welcome address.
Oh, great, all right, okay, give me, give me seconds, let me get ready. All right, um, I am going to read out my address, I prepared this one down, let me read it out. A welcome address by the governor of Aludo, by the SA of Aludo State at the fundraising event in honor of the acting Prime Minister, Honorable Logan Kere, today, eleventh of November, twenty twenty-five. Now, I would say, Your Excellency, the acting Prime Minister of Briggie, all cabinet members here present, distinguished guests, fellow patrons, ladies and gentlemen. At this with deep humility and profound sense of duty that I welcome you all once again to Aludo for this fought Aludo Brigi fundraising. Am I being heard? Loud and clear.
Clear.
All right. Today gathering is not only a testament to our collective will to pursue the freedom of our people, but also symbolic expression of unity amidst the storm that beset our young nation. Your Excellency, your presence here today in the heart, in the heart of Aludo State is a strong statement of solidarity, a message that despite the challenges we face, the leadership of our new nation stands shoulder to shoulder with its people. On behalf of the entire Aludo citizens, I say you are welcome. There. Sorry, I was thrown out again, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can hear you now.
Am I, am I, am I on back? Yeah, welcome back, welcome, I hear you loud and clear. All right, okay, let me continue from where I started. Uh, we meet at a time of great sabotage, deep pain, and rising tension across our towns and villages. Insecurity threatens the peace we so dearly yearn for. The terrorist occupation forces pretending to pursue peace and of order in our territory have left threats of destruction, fear, and grief. And our people cry out not just for bread and shelter, but for justice, dignity, and the right to live without fear. Colonial fingerprints still stains the fabric of our political reality. By coning design, internal discourse has been planted like weed amongst us. Brothers now turns against brother. While the true adversary watches with quiet satisfaction. This must end. We must reawaken our consciousness and remember that our shared struggle is not with each other, but with the forces that seek to keep us divided and subdued. This fundraising effort is not merely about resources. It is our responsibility. We raise funds to restore hope, to rebuild communities, to support displaced families, and defend our land and parents, and threaten the civic institutions that will form the backbone of our value system. Let this gathering ignite a renewed sense of purpose in us all. Let us send a message beyond our borders that Aludo State, and indeed our entire Biafran land, is not a land to be broken, but a people determined to rise again. Together with peace, sacrifice, and ambition, we shall overcome. Thank you. May God grant us freedom and peace and return to our land in due course. Thank you very much for attending. De wun.
De wun.
Thank you.
De wun.
You are welcome, you have that beautiful address. So, that, in the Aludo corner. What, Aludo corner? Oh, my Biafran corner. Where's the no? Yes, all right, I told, I told already. So, um, SA, uh, please don't go far because we are still in your court. Uh, very few, because one day Nepa say, and, uh, let them stop bothering your area. Uh, uh, we did this, yeah.
Brother Nepa, I have steady light, it's not Nepa.
Uh, yes, everything, everything about, uh, uh, disturbers and breakdown have something to do with Nepa, so.
I think my own is more of a Nigerian network, telecommunications network. Uh, I have, I have stable lights here.
Yes, I know, I know, I just, uh, it just, uh, worry my, uh, and when, when somebody is identified with a ba- a ba- a bad, a bad, and everything about him will be remembered with a bad instances and references. So, Nepa have been known for that, for failures. So, thank you all, uh, Biafrans, uh, once again, and like always, as, uh, we all have heard from the SA, uh, from the, uh, initial, uh, uh, address and the speeches, it is about support, welcoming, interaction, and knowing the things, being informed. That is all what is all about. And the importance of also townhouse meetings is also to relate to others. Not only what we hear, uh, I guess, in every meeting, but also to be able to relay such messages or informations to others that, um, are not opportuned to be present there. So, please, as you, uh, come, if you are from other states, take one of, uh, two things uh, from here and, uh, take it home and bring your people also closer to, um, uh, following up, because it's not about copying or emulating, it's about, uh, following up, doing the things that, uh, we all have to do to achieve the necessary results. That is what town halls is all about and this gathering. Um, SA, I think, uh, you have to call up uh, somebody to present the color note for us. Um, yeah, we have, uh, Agwa, is it, Agwa, um, Namak, is it Agwa, is it?
Yes, Agwa, but I don't think he will be around at this meeting.
Uh, okay, um, somebody is, uh, desperately raising hand, is there any issue? Why Jesus?
That's it, why Jesus, I don't, yeah, he can speak now, he have, uh, he have a co-host.
Why Jesus, is there any issue? He doesn't have co-host from what I see.
Okay, okay, it's me, it's me, I just, I just raised a hand so that I can be unmuted.
All right, all right, okay, okay. You can bring your hand down, why Jesus? Um, um, Agwa, is he, is he available here?
No, he's not.
I can't see him. Uh, in my mind, please, can you take up the responsibility? Present the color.
Uh, Aludo, unu kwe.
Yeah.
Aludo, Aludo kwen wo.
Yeah.
Maybe, uh, unu, unu kwe wo.
Yeah.
You both, mama no wo.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, I see, oh yeah, we're sad, oh gee, we're sad. Uh, we're not here, I fear, it's your build, we are not afraid, I'm not going to go. This one, who that you are on that, what cost study? If I were American, why you are there? Or the, and you, I take it the responsibility. If I could, I'm against one. Is who, is who going to put here, when you go out? I phone, so I can get during the whole time, and then they wish you have fear. I'm not sure, I want to pass, I give you a very good guest. At the same time, the color note serve the same purpose. I should, we're sorry, we're sad. On behalf of Aludo State and the executive of the state, I hereby present the color notes. But at the same time, break the color note for our amiable, enviable APM and his entourage, they behind the sun, I need for this town hall meeting, he may listen together. I know, look, who the whole fifteen counties in Aludo, oh, there's no garage. I know, look, and then nine, you were, oh, Bia, where are you? I know, look, this year, do, however, Bia, where are you? I know, look, the former, them, how about, where are you? I know, look, there, they try to hide, why, you're going, what they might be, however, Bia, where are you? On, on this note, I'm a G five, and my, I look, our SA. I'll be a good guy, I'm a poor guy, I'm a, because I won, I won, where? Yeah, but I'm hard, I'm not bad, but I'm poor, I have my money, wo.
Yo. Wow, thank you.
Aludo, de wun.
De wun.
Aludo, can no.
Can wo.
Yeah.
We might be after, no question, oh.
Yo.
Uh, uh, reformer, give me, my, the, you know, about, sorry, you know, go, oh, che. You're good, but sorry. Uh, where are you, I, why, I can't land, eating. Our body, I'm not, would be, where are you? The mandala, I tap, who the choir, so, Aludo, mama.
Wow.
I made, I made ten thousand, I support, oh, John, he good, sir. De wun.
De wun.
Yeah, but I'm here, but I'm here, I'm here, I made you five thousand, I'm born, oh, gee. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Uh, 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 because, uh, Namak and, uh, why Jesus, you, you can also help in, uh, coordinate in the, uh, with the hands and the, in the raising of hands and the and identify people, so, thank you.
Honorable, I can get the hello.
Yes, sir. Can wo.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well.
To, 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 Aludo, can wo.
Who?
Right.
Can wo.
Who?
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, though.
Who?
Yeah.
One, no.
Who?
Yeah.
Uh, my, I'm supporter, my. I say, with the some of, in welcoming the APM, uh, with the some of, um, ten thousand, a damn, AJ. Ten thousand, AJ.
I look, I look, I can, I look, I can.
They were, they were, uh, thank you. They were, so, uh, please, uh, all, uh, Aludo indigenous, county heads and admins, please come and pick the color note for your county and your people. In the Aludo, only Bia, we're ready.
Yeah, I can, I'm, I'm gonna, on behalf of, uh, I fear, I didn't five thousand, where's that, I watch you. You're ten thousand, if I need, but I just mind, I fear. Who, 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 who?
Thank you very much.
They were, they were, they were, can, Namak.
That's it. Aludo, I'll just go land, wo. Only Bia, bro, Roger.
Uh, um, uh, I may announce, uh, updates from my end. Um, update, um, what the blessing, I need, eh? Oh gee, ten thousand, I support, huh? I control, yeah, I can.
Okay.
You know, only, yeah, I can, I can.
AJ, don't forget, AJ.
Also, also, what I'm passing, oh, I'm, 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 yeah, yeah, I'm, 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 yeah, join, I'm meeting now. Um, I'm, you, who got you, I'm okay. Only, a total of one hundred, a gemma. And I'll pull it, uh, I'll pull it, the money already. I copy, I can, I can.
Who, who, yeah, I can.
They won. They won, I'll pull it, the money.
My, I could, Roger, they were, my, what a blessing.
They were, sir.
They were, what a blessing.
Very much. Uh, why Jesus, uh, come up with your update?
Ja, Aludo, kono.
Wow.
Aludo, kono.
What?
Right.
That one. You, you, so, I find it, tell me, but, but because of, because it's too much, see. Uh, what's him, come, go, ru. Uh, five thousand AJ, bossar, what you? And then, I'm a man, Jack, pass it, boy, you know. Hello, they, right, sir.
No, seven, five.
What's the more, go, ruh, another? Forty thousand, A J. Go to support, why, here. Uh.
Okay.
My, uh, you're a man, it's you, man. Yeah, it's okay, go, ruh, five thousand, A J. Support is already, yeah, near me, guy. And that one.
Total of, total of, what, who, let, total of, what?
Total of fifty thousand.
Okay. For now.
Our total of fifty thousand.
They were.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
They were.
Aludo, only be our Roger, come and pick color, come and pick color, only have your Roger.
Come, pass it, boy, that's my.
I'm, I'm, go on.
Madame, what you could. Present, so, you go, us, but, get, go, ruh. Fifteen thousand, A J. He's over here.
One, five.
On the other, but. Uh, sixty-five, A J. From my end.
S A, Madame, what you could, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, yes.
Internet.
Thousand, again.
Fifteen thousand, so altogether from him, uh, sixty-five thousand.
Okay.
They were, but, on the, my, better, I can, what, balance, you think?
It's my brother, only, the, uh.
Anyway, 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 anyway.
I could put a word, go, a lot of them, but, please.
We, we, yeah, we're, yeah, Madame, what you could, it's a.
It's a, my brother, I'm a cow.
Cow, oh.
Thank you very much. No, the, you can, we can, color, not, color, not, color, not, color, not eating, color, color, not is broken, I have, it must be eating, so please come forward and pick your color knot.
Uh, one of the, I, I, not, yeah.
Our, and, uh, so, that was, Roger, was around, do.
Yeah.
And while you are eating, you also eat life. So, color not is not brought out to be eaten by the presenter alone. It must be eaten. So, Aludo, can, Aludo, what? Yes. And why Jesus, go on.
I can, so, I'm. I'm, second, I met, you can, they, from, man. Obre, it's a. Who's, I, I, oh, Z, um, bah. Uh, no, who, no, do, even, um, many. So, obre, it's a, like, it's, okay, it's, who, it, boy, boy, yeah, um, on, that is, oh, boy, no, mona. County. Yeah, bro, it's a. Abam. Uh, uh, that, uh, uh, oh, boy.
We are also, we are also not in a cola eating. Cola have been broken, so you can still pick your cola note. I am a rebel who can't be a man, I am a man who can't be a woman. I think we're not dancing to a rumba or a dance. I think it's cool. Oh, sorry. I did it. He's here with us. Oh, cool with us. And he's out. I'm not going to let him. You know, I am a little bit. He's not going to do it. He's a monster. Rumba or a dance. I don't want to dance to a rumba or a dance. And he's out. I got something. He's beautiful. He's a good one. I think we're cool. Oh, I think we're cool. I'm not going to go. And you go. You go. And for his state, you know. I'm here. That's a no. Oh, I think we're not going to. Hey. We are also, we are also not in a cola eating. Cola have been broken, so you can still pick your cola note.
I'm a rebel who can't be a man, I am a man who can't be a woman. I don't know this year. I'm a man. Oh, I think we're not going to leave. He's leaving. I'm not going to. I, I need to, I need to, I need to screen. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. Because he's leaving. I, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm not going to. Yes, I'll get the other one. I'll get the next item on the agenda.
So, thank you, thank you. So, um, cola note, um, I think, uh, I will also, uh, take cola note with fifty Ajema for Imeni.
Good. Uh, town, you know, for Savano. Defend your county. We have fifteen, fifteen counties.
Today, every, everybody here must identify which his or her county.
Um, defend your county, defend your county.
Today, today, be, be ready to identify your county or your state is coming up. So please, cola note, cola note, cola note. We are eating the cola note.
Yeah, I want to. Many can. Oh, oh, my county. Oh, my county, you know, for Savano. There were.
Oh, I'm not a blame. Many can. Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, 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 I'm not a county.
Uh, yes, I think you may mention on Monday, the US, US.
My, 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 my. Okay. Okay, okay, okay. United States of America, North and South.
Uh, but I had immigration also. Oh, Mona.
Yeah, yeah, Mona.
Uh? Oh, my, 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 you can't know, because, because, uh, come up or, or, um.
Come, come, yeah, come, come, hello, Mona.
Okay, USA, no, no, Mona.
Bridgie, USA, like.
Oh, Mona, yes, I think I had, I had immigration.
I go for no Mona, I can't. Uh, I know what's it for that. It's not for county, I, I, they can represent, they buy, yeah, for sure.
So, uh, yes, uh, honorable send the house while waiting for, uh, county members that are still stopped in a hold up. So the cola note is open for everybody, please. It's not only meant for Aludho people. It is a color of life. Everyone of us here, uh, have to share with the life, with the cola note. So please, uh, I want you to identify to be a part of us. Come and pick a cola note.
And so if you're from another state, you can still pick your, with cola on behalf of your state. In there, one.
Normally, as the Igbo culture, uh, enters, we are supposed to even take this cola note, like, like, to every representative, yeah? Uh, okay, honorable, go on.
Yeah, scan over.
Can.
Yes, on behalf of Alabama, I'm, I'm not a word. With the sum of, um, five thousand Ajem, Ajem, Ajem. No, just say.
Abam County, Abam County.
Yeah, Ruby, yes, sir.
There were.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You are welcome. I'm the Abama, I have to go on, I know. I did, I did, this, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Uh huh. Take my time, take my time.
Yes, encode the number. And there, you are welcome.
Abam, oh, yeah, go there, Roger.
Five thousand Ajem.
Uh, Aludo Penny.
Wow. Yeah.
Yeah. Wow.
The land of peace, best you own me.
Wow.
Aludo, Darren, Darren, you say, Nick.
Yeah, wow.
Yes, I can, I can, my dear.
Abam, Bonon, Abadi. Thank you so much, Aludo, you're making their friend proud. Thank you so much. Um, uh, on behalf of, um, on behalf of the Mewu State, of the Mewu.
Of the Mewu, yeah.
Twenty Ajema.
Abam, 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 how much?
Twenty Ajema.
Five thousand.
Twenty Ajema. On behalf of.
The Mewu.
It's twenty Ajema.
Control your, twenty Ajema, twenty. For Tony, I don't know. Control your.
Is it, is it? Oh, no, control your. Ajema. Oh, you're a, you're a, I'm also the record. Oh, no, you're the Ajema.
Code the number from, uh, of the Mewu State.
Code the number.
From the Mewu State.
My dear.
Well, Roger. Well, now, with that, we're about twenty Ajema, we're on behalf of the Mewu State. When I said, when the Mewu State, uh, Anabata, um, eight P M on June first, Darren. June first.
Ah, I'm, we call this a vario, okay? This is a, this is a vario, okay?
I, I, I just.
We fully represented.
So, forty Ajema, forty Ajema, of the Mewu and the.
Roger.
Yeah.
Forty Ajema for Roger. Both, chief, encode the number, honorable, code the number. Minister, code the number and, uh, of the Mewu State. Thank you.
All right, what of Abam, Abam?
Abam, five thousand. Five thousand Ajem.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you, um, I, I could tell them, encode the number. I can be called, I can, I can.
Oh, for none, none, I.
I call it.
More than a day, may I, may I, I'm a hard job.
Bye, children, bye.
May I, may I, they go.
May I go, they might be, who are three, go, they might.
Uh.
So, we're not going to see, but I will, I will also. I'm going to do that, to hear, I'm not going to. We're not going to, it probably is a, we're not, nation, mobile, country representative. They are no good, Roger, and they don't go, sir. Oh, yeah, they are, 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 they are. I do don't need to, I don't mean, you know, for Savano. You know, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not. There were.
There were, thank you. Uh, please, everybody come and pick cola note. You don't have to be an Aludho, uh, uh, Brigi Jenny, Brigi Jenny. I didn't come, I didn't, it, 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 it. Oh, and there, you are welcome, you are free.
Okay. There were no.
There were.
Number, I.
I didn't know, ma.
Uh huh.
I'm not about who, oh.
Uh huh.
And, and this are not.
Hmm, God. Uh, I'm age fifty thousand Ajem, parents, on behalf of New York and Omu Imeni.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Receipt, as usual, goes to, okay.
Thank you.
I'm a special music, special song.
Yeah, 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 but it's children, I want, no, children, I want, no, that is.
Special song.
Fifty thousand Ajem.
Yes.
Yes.
I got convert, yeah.
Uh, okay.
Uh, I will, I will get the conversion and pay it in and send receipt, okay?
Thank you very much, thank you.
There were.
I may be a chong, one, oh, two, I'm going to, I'm going to.
He got one, one, he got one, he's singing.
Oh, what, Kanye, Kanye, and care, Kanye, and care, Kanye, special, and care. Is he, he got one, they're missing.
Because I'm one more, yeah, one.
He was your name.
He made.
Eh?
Eh?
Is he one, you know, leave?
Well, my, my, my donation on behalf of Omu Imeni, give, send.
Yeah, that, what, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a.
I, 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 I.
We must carry one and go to a house here from Omu Imeni.
One, one, no, I go, I hope, I can, I go, no.
Yes, because you know, because you, because you, because, say, amen, they go, miss, you know, I'm going to get you, you know, the, 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 the. Have, have for, I, I, uh, honorable love, but it's me, yeah.
Uh, 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 that, that love, but it's Google.
Oh, what them, what them, what them, what them?
My, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Is he, oh?
Oh, my, keep it, why you play? Oh, keep it, why you play? I'm going to. I'm going to.
He, he chose, he look at, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to.
Uh, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to.
I'm going to, I'm going to, code the number, no, yes.
Our, our Ajemba.
My, my, they encode the number.
Oh, no, they are, Roger, oh, no, they are, Roger, oh, no, they are, Roger.
Again, in. My, they encode the number. Honorable love, I can't deny you, I can't deny you.
Yes, I, 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 I.
Come and pick the color, come and eat the color. A P Maga by the original Paula. He's on tour, he's our visitor, he's not going back with any of the color notes. The color is meant to be eaten. So please come and pick your color notes, come and eat your color notes with the A P. So while, um, what does, can you, uh, let me see, uh, how prepared the A P M is? Uh, can you, uh, keep the hall moving, let me see if A P M is ready for?
I got the hello, I got the hello.
And please let them in. Oh, I know what you're gonna do, now I have, now I may have, uh, unmute to pick the color. I think, uh, no, there's no hand raised. Can I, yeah, can I do this?
Okay, on the hacker, on the hacker, don't worry, on the hacker, they should remove the pin. I will go to log her in. About Jojo. Am you on the but to talk on?
Yes, I want to make a short call, can you just continue with the moder- with the moderation, please? Please call a note, uh, we are just, uh, waiting for the A P M to, for his address. But let me see if I'll get him, I don't know if he's close to his gadget. Please call a note, call a note, come and pick your color notes. Aludo have broken the color notes. It's meant for everyone.
There one on. Welcome.
Yeah, one.
There were.
There was, sir, you're welcome, you're welcome, A P M.
I don't know why, uh, echo. Is it from me?
Uh, let me see from whose end. Uh, all my, all my guys is muted here, it can be from you, sir.
A P M, there were, I greet you, welcome.
Yeah, yeah.
There were, um, greeting from here, good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good evening, good evening from this side. There was, sir, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir, so, behalf France, A P, um, behalf France, Republic of Martin, Azar, is about to address you, please put your ears down and listen, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Honorable O K O, thank you, and thanks the Aludo, Adme and the Executive. Thank you all, fellow behalf France. As we always do, we always remember those before us. Our leader, Odume Gudjuku and our leader, Philip Ephion. We appreciate all they have done for us and the example they set before us. Educating us, the need to fight for freedom. The reason why we deserve to be free. And we follow their footsteps and emulate everything that they have done. Thank you. We remember our leader, Mazinam Dikano. Just few days ago, the Nigerian terrorist country, they took Biafra to court, not our leader. When our leader, anytime, any day, he appear in court. It's Biafra that appear in court. So if you don't know that, so when you say you're sitting at home for our leader Mazinam Dikano, that is wrong. We are sitting at home for Biafra freedom. Because we are doing it for our freedom. If it is not for Biafra, or if it is not for fighting for our freedom, I don't see any reason why we'll be sitting at home. Sitting, sitting at home is to send a clear message, a signal of people who want their freedom. So sitting at home is what the Biafra people have, uh, have decide to do, to send their message across our global community. We appreciate our leader Mazinam Dikano for all he's doing. I believe we love him. I believe we all know what he stands for. A lot of people that are shouting, only and do, only and do today. When he was here preaching, 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 to a time, he said he can't be here. He's tired of preaching, he wants action. Some of them mock him, some never believe in him. Some never believe that he's a Messiah to stay with the African nation. But today, they call his name. They think praises on the same man, that leader, that they despise. Our Prime Minister Mazie Simon Ewan, that is, uh, uh, that the Finnish Authority head for the so-called question, the same thing happened. They call him name, casual him. Try to hold him accountability of all corner. Accuse him of word, a crime he never committed. At the time, they accuse him, saying that he work, uh, with the Nigerian state. At the time, they accuse him that Tunubu paid him. There is no manner of accusation. The same people that accuse him, call him all these name. Today, they are calling our P M, our P M. But when he was here with us, they did not really value him much or treat him like he deserved. I don't know why it's a pattern, but we need to change narrative. My fellow citizens of Aludo, we are here today again. Still preaching the gospel. We will not stop. We will be saying it the way it is until our people wake up to do the right thing. Freedom is not taken. I'm sorry, freedom is not given, it's taken. Take your freedom. For any international, uh, international community, we come to support or to help us, we have to first initiate. We have to first show the readiness that we are ready to go. We have to first show the readiness as a people. My fellow behalf France. We have those that are piloting the affair of this movement, which is the Brigay government. The Brigay government comprises of all behalfers. Both those that are sitting at home, they are all part of the government. Because the government is our government. And we must respect the government as long as the government is all of us government and support the government. And stop to casual this government indirectly. And stop to hold this government accountability where there is no accountability. And stop to manufacture anything that would discredit what we are doing. We have a lot of behalf France that have seized this opportunity. Blogging with this, our restoration cost, using the issue of Biafra to profit and gain themselves. Most people there, out there in the media, that call themselves content creators. They are not supporting it. They are just using it for their own stomach infrastructure. They are using it to make money for themselves, to benefit themselves. And if you are Biafra, doing that, please kindly disease from me. Because the land of Biafra and the people of Biafra would never forgive you. The air you drink, the air you breathe will work against you. The water you drink will turn to poison. The food you eat will turn to poison. As long as you have come to kill us, nothing good will come your way. The Africans have been killed in million. Enough is enough. If you are one of those in the media, believing you are media personnel, campaigning, talking about Biafra, the upright. You are using Biafra to make money, maybe by broadcasting. Do the right thing. Stop propaganda. Stop lying against the Biafra people and the government. Do what is right. So you will be blessed. If not, all your lives, you will live a life of agony. You will regret why you are created or why you are in this world. Because Biafra people, our heart is broken. We have been killed in millions. And some of the people that are supposed to use their media channel to do the writing, they are using it to profit themselves, to gain themselves, because they monetize it just to make money. We are not saying you cannot use your channel to make money, but as long as you are doing that, you can even use the money to support the liberation. A lot of these medias that are still using the issue of our freedom, Biafra freedom, to profit themselves, they, they hardly contribute to our freedom financially. And they are making money every month from it. Rather, they want to talk about whether if our defense is doing enough, whether we are doing enough, or they are not seeing what we are doing. How will you see what we are doing if you are not supporting? You have to support as a Biafra. We Biafra people are sending a strong warning and a message to every media personnel, whether you are content creator, whether you are blogging or whatsoever, whether you are independent media or private media or whatever media, use your platform to glorify the cause of Biafra. Use your platform to save the life of your people. You can still be making your money while using it, we have nothing against monetizing your platform. Maybe that's only how you'll be able to survive financially. But don't sabotage what we are doing. Because a lot of you believe that you know it all. A lot of the medias believe they are the voice of the Biafra people. But in actual sense, indirectly, whether they know or they don't, they are sabotaging what we are doing. As long as you are sabotaging what we are doing, you are a saboteur. You are fighting against our freedom, one way or the other way. Please. So that you won't cry a vibe, no. Our heart is bleeding. Every day, we talk to our people how to wake up. We yell, yell, yell with our loud voice. We try to voice it out while we speak. We try to signal to our people so they can know we need to save our land. Why you still have some among us? They seize the opportunity to profit from it. They seize the opportunity to use their voice. The voice they're supposed to use to save our people. The voice they're supposed to use to educate behalf France. They need to rise up, they need to wake up. Some believe when they speak the truth, they won't have enough viewers. They won't make enough money at the end of the month. So they better come with all kinds of propaganda. Because in Nigerian terrorist states have thousands of people, they have paid to fight us through social media network, of which a lot of them go to these different platforms to praise them, to sing praises, to make it seem like they are doing the right thing. What will it profit you? When you gain the whole world and you lose your dear land of Biafra. What will it profit you? When you make all the money and you allow the terrorist country to kill your families, to kill your people, what is your gain? Those of you in the media, all of you that are watching, you all know what I'm talking about. Stop deceiving yourself. Stop faking. Be real and be real person. We are not working with ghosts. Be man enough. We need to know who you are. Show that you are real and you are fighting for Biafra. You people have deceived us enough. And for the genuine Biafra freedom fighters, shine your eye. Know the source of your information. Know the source of your network. Know who you listen to. Bad associations were good for habit. If you listen or you watch fake news all day, you will start reasoning. Start thinking or start taking in, because in you, inside your memory, everything will be revolve around what you watch or what you listen to. Automatically, that fake news will turn to good news, will be real news. Your source of channel, your source of news can change your life for good or for worse. We live in a world where social media pave or change the narrative how people think. That is why during election, during the campaign, any party that is campaigning, they spend a lot of money, like here, United States of America. Sometimes they spend millions of dollar to a billion or plus of dollar in commercial, in media. Because for the people to know what is going on, they get their information from social media. So all you social media personnel, if you think Biafra is not going to totally be liberated, you are joking. If you think what we are doing is not real, you are joking. And if you decide to use your platform to sabotage Biafra people, to kill Biafra people, be ready. That land of Biafra will swallow you. If you step your faith in the land of Biafra, that land will deal with you. If not now, in near future. And wherever you are around the world, wherever you broadcasting from, everything, everything of nature will walk against you. Anything you ever desire, you ever ask for, you will not get it. Because you have killed the people of God. Because you have killed behalf France. Our heart is bleeding with pain, agony. We saw what is happening in Biafra land every day. From the Minister of Rintana Affair, I don't know how many of you that have seen, uh, been to her page and you will see the tweet. What is happening in Biafra land? How the terrorist country is bombing and killing innocent Biafra. And if you tell me you are true Biafra, after seeing all this, you think it's okay? It is not. We also saw what happened yesterday in Bakasi Peninsula. The Nigerian terrorists, they have been colluding with the Cameroon terrorists. They have a joint task force in that areas of which yesterday the Biafrans able to bring down one of their, one of their fighter jet out of the train. The other two, nobody asked them, would they even know how, how they flew from that area? They turn around. Because if they have waste more time, all three will be done. We are fighting a war that the world don't want to talk about. CNN of fake news don't want to talk about it. BBC fake news don't want to talk about it. Channel Television of the Zou terrorist country don't want to talk about it. Arise don't want to talk about it. All these gutter useless shit hole media, they don't talk about it. Can you tell me any reason why shooting down one of the jet? For, uh, one of the jet out of the train from the Cameroon, joint task with the Nigerian terrorist country and no major news carry it? What does that tell you? We have enemy on our right side, left side, back and front, even within this fight we have. This war that they have brought to us, we are not backing down. We are not going back, we are not retrieving. We will fight to the finish. We will do everything humanly possible to make sure we secure our freedom. Because freedom is not given, freedom is taken. Every day, we watch our media team doing the new educating Biafra people. Talking to the Biafra people what to do. Nothing that been said today. Nothing that I'm saying now, that our leader Mazinam Dikano have never said. No kind of grammar or English that I'm speaking, that our leader Mazinam Dikano have not spoken. And we all know that is highly educated as well, for those that are accountability of grammar and English. Is there any kind of English you have not heard from our leader Mazinam Dikano? Which are few that is more educated than him. And a lot of people still refuse to do the writing. A lot still refuse to listen. But we can see that this great prophet, everything he have said, over ninety percent have come to pass. Some does still want to believe. And for the politicians, the illegitimate politicians that are still parading themselves in Biafra land, every day I do assure them, if they think it's okay, that everything is alright, it is not. It's not okay. We will deal with them. I don't know how they feel. I don't know how they're able to sleep. After bringing? Working with the Nigerian terrorists to come and kill? Their own? To come and kill Biafrans? I don't know how? They sleep at night? I don't know what family they come from? Even their family member by extension, uncle, nephew, cousin, whatever? Can't even talk to them, sit them down? Lecture them, educate them the reason why? They should support? And fight for our freedom? Shame unto all of them? Shame to them? Biafrans, I'm still using this opportunity? We are pleading with everyone? That is still waiting until our leader Mazinamdekan is released, or our prime minister is released? Before they will start to support? Our freedom, which is their freedom as well? Please? Don't wait before it is too late? What we are doing now? We actually help them? We actually help their release as well? If we all decide to step aside and wait? That means? We are not going to talk about Biafra anymore? Please, we plead with everyone? Whatever? That you've been offended one way or the other way? Just let it go? Come and support your freedom? We have one common enemy? The Nigerian terrorist country? And the Fulani ginger with terrorist bloodsucking demos? They are our enemy? Come all, let us all fight together? If you hold your phone back not to support? This freedom? Remember? It's not just my freedom? It's not just the Briggy government freedom? It's not just the Biafra people freedom? It's your freedom you are holding? It's your freedom as well? If you want results? If you wanted today, tomorrow, for us to be free totally? So we can chase our enemy out of our land? Why holding back the fund? The liberation fund? If we all hold back our fund without supporting our freedom? How do you think we will be able to fight our enemy? Are we going to fight our enemy with blowing whistle? Are we going to fight our enemy with bare hands? We see what going on? Between United States of America? How they deal with the Houthis? They did not do that with their behind? There's a logistic, what you use for war or what you use to fight? Why Israel is dealing with Hamas? They did not do that with behind? Russia and Ukraine, on the other hand? They are not fighting with whistle? They are not blowing whistle everywhere to win their war? Pakistan and India? We can see the missile flying front and back? Not with bare hand? It costs money, a gentleman? If you are a true Biafra? And you have the Biafra blood in you? And all you care about is accountability? Shame unto you? I want you to care about results? I want you to care about what you see that we are doing? Care about the activity of this government? For the past two years? We have graduated? That we able to conduct? Our referendum and re-declare our country, Biafra? And it's time to fund? To fund the angels that are liberating our land? What you need to worry about? How to take care of them? What do they need? How are they going to fight? If they have not have the logistic? To bring one of these jet fighter down yesterday? Do you think? We achieve that? We cannot achieve that by blowing whistle? We cannot achieve that with martial? We can achieve that by getting the right logistic? All this accountability group shame onto all of you? Right from get-go, our leader Mazinamdekan have was condemned? It never yet fruit? Rather it caused pain, agony? It caused division? We trust all the personnel that are working for the Biafra people? Without trust, we going nowhere? A lot have sacrificed? Our leader Mazinamdekan lost his parents because of this cost? We have a lot of our angels, our commanders? They have lost their life, their family because of this cost? Lot of our family members, mothers, children? They are in IDP camp today? A lot have been bombed even yesterday? Even when the Cameroon joint task force with the Nigerian terrorists? Yesterday? There's some bombing? And burning by the Bakasi Aziz? While we have some of our men also wounded? They need to be taken care of as well? Let's focus, set our eyes on the prize? Let's look at our achievements? We have grown from nothing? To something? In Washington DC, our presence is there already? They talk about us? They always ask question about? Territories that we have already liberated, how things are going? They want to know how serious we are? If whether they are ready? To support us, it depend on us? Fellow Biafrans, please, let's love one another? Let's do what is right? And appreciate every genuine freedom fighter? Appreciate everyone? That hold this cause so dear? Appreciate? Nothing wrong to appreciate him who have sacrificed? To make sure? This movement continue? Nothing wrong to appreciate? Every genuine that is doing the right thing? We are not saying appreciate them financially? Word of encouragement? Is good as well? Showing support is good as well? Instead of undermining our effort? With unity, we can move mountains? With love? We can do it all? Biafra? I will tell you that? If I, Mazyo Getuchukun Kire, if I can do it alone, if I can, I'm not saying I can? Because of, uh, we have a lot of enemies? That they will change what I said now to something else? I said this sometime last year during my interview with the media team? That I said? If I have the money? To even single-handedly? Deliver Biafra from our enemies, I will do it? So I'm use that word of contest and turn it around? No, what I meant is that if I have it? I will do anything? Anything to make sure I use that? To save our dear nation? Our leader Ojukwu did that? He set example? Of humanity? Of a leader who love his people? He used the words? Of his father? May he still rest in peace? To fight for his dear nation? I don't know why a lot of? Our Biafrans are holding back? We have millionaires and billionaires? Are they waiting until this enemy we get to them? Remember? Now that we need this fund to be able to free ourselves? If these people overrun our land and you all from Enoson, Nubiku Bana? Emoni, all these people? If you're gonna start coming with your money when it's too late? Maybe then we're not gonna be able to get any logistic? Don't come when it's too late? This is the right time that you all can come? Let's fund our freedom? Let us all get our freedom? Because in Biafra land, you will have the opportunity? Your business will strive? To the highest level? The sky will be your limit? Because we will have good security? We'll have everything that will make your business compete with the outside world? Not like now? The country called Nigeria? Always suppress all the business taku? From Biafra land? Like somebody like eBay to? They try the best they can to make sure eBay to go out of business? They are trying the best they can to make sure Enoson Mo to go out of business as well? They are trying the best they can? Alan O'Neyman, CEO of Air Peace? All the business owners from Biafra land? The Nigerian terrorist country, they are trying the best they can to bring them down? But in Biafra? We'll make sure we treat our own with respect? We'll make sure? They enjoying? And do business? As it's supposed to be? And we all, we have a, a good handshake? Please, my fellow Biafrans? It is time for all of us to come together? Unite and do the right thing? When we talk about unite, unity of Biafra? When we talk about Biafra, unite to come and unite together? We are Biafra need to unite? We would display that by supporting the government that is piloting the affair? We would display that by supporting the Briggy? That is the backbone of everything we are doing now? That's only how we can unite? We cannot be talking about Biafra unity? While we are destroying the unity? While we are destroying everything that's supposed to make it work? By joining? The process? Please, I'm gonna, uh, come back? I still have few more word to touch on? Please? Send message to every Biafran? That is time for them to come? Let us all unite? Let us all Biafra unite? If you are talking about Biafra unite, you are not uniting Biafra, you are subo? If you are talking about Biafra unite? You are not uniting Biafra? And you are sabotaging Biafra? Wherever you are? Everything will work against you? Nature will work against you? Be real and fight for the freedom of Biafra? And for all the bloggers, just as I said earlier, and body? Uh, content creators? That are making money? From talking about Biafra? Please? Report the accurate news? Don't betray what we are doing? If not? Everything? Will work against you wherever you are? Thank you fellow Biafrans? Please remember we are at war? If the war don't come to our rescue, we will rescue ourselves? And when the world see how resilient we are? When the world see how we are fighting our back? We will have allies? But it break my heart? That a lot of Biafrans are not waking up? Knowing that we are at war? If we are not at war? Why we the Cameroonian and the Nigeria have a joint task to come and bomb? Biafrans and kill Biafrans? Of which we brought one of their? Uh, fighter jet down? They should come, we are waiting for them? Anything that flies must come down? And the aid we can on? All our enemy within, all the subos, Azay, governor? Anyone we can lay our hand on? We would deal with that person? What they are preventing us from getting? Like Musa have said it? Tampa with their phone? Try to block the source of their phone? Put confusion within them? Are we going to allow Musa to succeed? That will never happen? Our Prime Minister Mazie Simon, he will come to us? Our leader Mazinamdekan will come to us? We are their hope? Where they are, our action will free them? We let, we need to show the world, let the world know? That even without them in our midst now? The Biafran struggle continue? The Biafran people say no, we must be free? Even if they arrest all of us? We can never surrender? We can never give up our land? In eighteen oh three? In Georgia, Atlanta, we all heard about what happened? When our fellow heroes? They decided that we? Besleve? They drowned? We Biafrans, we can never besleve? And we can never besleve in our land? Oyabulunu Patarakam, whoever that is subo among you? Do whatever you can in your own way? Whoever that have come to kill you? Kill that person first? That means that person don't mean well? For us or for you? It's called self-defense? Thank you fellow Biafrans? In the way?
Thank you, thank you Honorable APM? Thank you? We are loved to have you? At this wonderful speech, as always? Telling us what we should do, what we should have done, but, uh, it's unfortunate that many of us? Um, are still sleeping? Still don't want to wake up? And many have woken up, but instead? Decide to remain lying down? And before I continue, I think you deserve a little? In your saliva? Biafran, that is the? Yes, muchenaka, just come in. Thank you. That is wonderful word from our APM? The passion is as always burning in him? How God gave us these three young men? Our leader Oneye Dumazinamdekanu? Our Prime Minister? Our leader, our Prime Minister Mazie Simon Ebarjoko. And now our APM, Mazie Ogengkere. Each given to us the right time. What else do we want? What else do we want from God? What other way do we want our prayers to be answered? Other than to do the needful that is expected of us? Okay, Chukwuka. This sound is for all of us. While we dance, let us put hands in our pockets and pray. But we are dancing with the APM. Hey, Dudi Kijé.
We wanna use the opportunity to appreciate all of our mothers.
Thank you.
We respect them, we love them, we hold them so dear. Without them, we're not going to be in this world. And we pray that we all make it to Biafra land. So we can all enjoy this beautiful world together. We love you all our mothers, all our own mother. Especially all the pioneers, our mothers that have been piloting their faith and part of this great movement. We appreciate all of you. We love you all. Without our mothers, we can do nothing. We love them, we hold them so dear. Wanna say thank you all. Thank you, thank you. Please, if you have not be part of this great motherhood, kindly join and be part of it. Our leader Mazinamdekan once talked about it and said when our mothers join our freedom, Biafra here and Biafra will be here. So we call out all the genuine mothers and the non-genuine ones. To please kindly come to our rescue, kindly come to save Biafra land, which is our motherland. You have not been supporting and you one of our mother. Please support financially, spiritually, physically or otherwise. The word is described as mother. Our motherland must be protected. Our motherland is our land. Our mothers remain our mothers. It's time for our mothers to show they are the mother of the land. It's time for the mother of the land to not show their children, to take care of their offspring, sorry. Mothers are still dear to us. We love you, our mother. Please, if you're one of our mothers and you have not been doing the right thing, kindly keep in, join the fruitful, good motherhood. So that your name will be written in golden pen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you once again, APM. I did not it through my noby, that is because I wanted to appreciate our mothers. Please, those that have their hands up, please don't take it down. Let us appreciate our mothers, just as APM rightly interjected. Thank you very much and thank you all our sweet mothers, especially from our APM to you. Without your help, without your protection, without your guidance, we will never be grown up to do what we are doing today. So, thank you. So Mazie, we have eaten kola nut before, but the kola nut is still ongoing. And as you all know, we are eating kola nut with the APM. Mazie, Honorable Mazie Onyeze, I think you are first, please pardon me.
Mazo, Mazo, okay, Honorable Oked, both eating kola nut and donation, let it happen at the same time, please.
Yes, that's exactly what I mean. And that is what I'm trying to explain, that we have eaten it and we are continuing with a boat combined. But kola nut, picking kola nut for those who are not here and the important APM's speech. But to you know, thank you very much. So please, if I miss out the orderly, as you raise your man, pardon me, I did not. Because so Onyeze, I think you should go first. And Honorable Awara, you are welcome, you are welcome on board. You came in while the APM was addressing, so you are highly welcome. Onyeze, please go on. Okay, sorry, unmute yourself.
Good evening all once again.
Good evening, Onyeze.
My APM, I thank you very specially, very wonderful man. Very good leader, we appreciate you mostly, thank you so much. I have announced one of our, Ezine, Ezine love God, announced you today as you contributed to the Aludho fundraiser. Five thousand Ajema and me, two thousand Ajema. I want to add again, Wada Abigail. Ezine Wada Abigail, today is Ezine day, so we are celebrating all our mothers. Ezine, Ezine Abigail, thirty Ajema in support of Aludho today. We are still waiting for that someday.
Thank you. Please, Onyeze, say this thing, is it five thousand Aj, two thousand Aj? Let me understand so that we can record it well.
The former one I announced before was five thousand Aj and two thousand Aj.
Okay, thanks for Ezine.
Ezine, love God, five thousand Aj.
Yes, that is twelve thousand now.
And me, two thousand Aj. But now I am announcing, now, now I'm announcing Ezine Abigail, thirty Ajema.
Okay.
Yeah, two Ezines now, two Ezines, the first one Ezine love God and now Ezine Abigail.
Yes, two Ezines from a where state, Owokeba.
Yes.
Owokeba. Yes. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, well done, thank you.
Thank you. So Mazie Nande, Anasike.
Anasike.
Anasike, unmute yourself, thank you.
My behead.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mazo, okay, greetings to you.
Thank you, Non and De.
Yeah, and they will, Aludho, they are do. Our APM, special salute. We are doing, they are doing their network, they are making us proud. Without wasting our time, I just want to support our APM's thunderous speech, twenty thousand Aj. I'll send the money.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Bless you, bless you, bless you.
Yes, Mazie, encode the number.
Thank you so much, APM, thank you so much for your good work. I want to tell you that we are strongly, have confidence in you. You will deliver, you make us proud, make our promise a proud, make Biafran proud. We stand with you. I also want to say, I want to say to our mothers, Happy Mother's Day, Happy Mother's Day. On behalf of all the Maygus States, that will be welcoming you on first of two. I'm supporting and celebrate, join you supporting, celebrating our mothers with fifty Ajema.
Wow. Wow, wow, wow. Okay, sorry, 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 sorry. Sorry, 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 pardon, pardon.
In the blessing you are landing, come, as a tale, come and do that.
Don't worry, I think.
Don't be brave, you are landing, Biafrans, okay? I will send this stuff ninety Ajema to Honorable Awara, definitely tomorrow, okay?
Thank you very much, you are welcome, you are welcome. So iPhone. Because I want your man this iPhone, because I don't know if he is. And if he was identified before.
Now me, oh, sorry.
Now you be who?
Yeah, well, not, yeah, well, yeah, blah blah, I say blah blah, I say okay.
Now you be who, can I document?
Thank you, Luca, thank you, Luca.
Welcome, man, welcome, welcome, man.
I won't kill you, iPhone is the one free, iPhone is the one. No, that is, I unmuted iPhone, then killing us now, you are now.
I don't watch here, I don't watch here, I'm careful.
I'm careful.
Okay, that's what I do, you are welcome.
Okay, my people. All right, we can support our APM's speech with fifty Ajema. For this my account.
Thank you very much, thank. Omoada Ajema, don't worry, they go here. They go here, they go here. How much I want, how much, how much, how much, what, that you see, like burning fire, I say, I will have that, I would welcome. You have fun, thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Mystic man.
Yeah.
They were, Barasankiroka, they were, Imena.
Thank you.
So now who is, I think iPhone is down. Okay, freedom for all, Kiru, you have. Let the other speakers finish, then you get your music, you get your music. Freedom for all. What is happening, dear? I think this freedom for all is suspect.
Oh, when I, oh, when I two systems on, where about your one?
Okay, okay.
Because, because my radio.
Okay, just now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, okay, good evening, dear friends. Good evening, all over, good evening, everybody. I, I, I've been very happy today, at least, moving on a little bit. I will only, on behalf of, on behalf of, and my support to Aludho with Ajema.
The mayor, especially because, I'm a, for the animal, I go, look at her.
Oh, thank you very much, um, uh, can you, uh, can you lend this, please?
Fifty Ajema.
Fifty Ajema, thank you, thank you. And, uh, please, uh, please, where, where are you based? Sorry?
I'm a male, is I'm on a weekend.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, okay, can you, can you put there up, can you, can you get your receipt, may I, may I remit?
Okay.
Bunny face.
With, uh, with, uh, this name, I'll give me, uh, uh, I'll give me a identify, I will only, uh, tell him, uh, freedom for all. No, this in the bridge, uh, bridge, I know my, I'm much, I cannot recognize the voice.
Okay, okay.
Uh, okay, because I've been difficult to, um, uh, to identify the voice, that is a problem, that is a problem. Because, uh, this in our bridge, uh, one, they go and the bridge, it's not coming out clear.
No problem.
No, I better, okay, that is, uh, thank you, that is, I will, I'll get, I'll get to him, I'll tell, uh, I'll contact Bunny Face. Imena, thank you, thank you, you are welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, my, Dan Kiro, uh, uh, can you take down your hands, please? Okay, can, I, anyone has something, uh, can I, can you tell him? encode the number, your hand is still up.
Okay.
Eighty Ajema. Yeah, oh, okay, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Okay, okay, can you hook it?
I say plus thirty, so altogether eighty Ajema.
And Kiro, and Kiro, Abi?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Today, we mothers' day special, uh, I deserve, I deserve something, wait, wait, wait. Please, come and, come and dance with our sister, come and dance, she, she should not dance alone. Support A P M, support the last speaker. Support the movement, support their free liberation. Whichever one you choose, we need the support. So, thank you. So, um, uh, yes, and why Jesus, why Jesus, go on?
Well, okay, there was a, uh, A P M greetings. To, uh, 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 before I go on, there's something that is cracking my brain. And I want you, uh, two thousand Aj to find out, who will give me that answer. If you get it wrong, if you want to answer it and you get it wrong, you will give the money that, uh, J twice, the one I put them. Please, I discovered a mathematical error. A calculation error. And that calculation error I discovered. We have two and one as twenty one. Three and one as thirty one. Four and one as forty one. Then, one and one, what will it be?
Do you, do you want the immediate answer, or?
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they share on our screen, they, they share on our screen.
Our, uh, our O B B J test.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, display it on the screen.
I said, listen now, I said of numerical error, I, I just see that one, two and one is called twenty one. Three and one is called thirty one, four and one is called forty one. And I started wondering, what will one and one be called?
Is eleven now, or eleven two?
Okay, no, because it cannot be, it cannot be eleven.
One and one.
It's got, it cannot be, um, uh, uh, I say, you, uh, you are not attentive, you are not paying attentive, so.
A calculation error that I did. So please, another person, is the.
My Jesus, but you just, you just took us by force into a classroom, you didn't ask whether there are people who want to.
I, I can not write it because I'm using, uh, a phone.
Oh, okay, what, okay, why Jesus, I, I understand your question, that was, I'm putting it down, I'm putting it down, it will be, uh, place our, our, some, some minutes now, I got it, so, uh, because, um, uh, why Jesus want to um, have an answer to, uh, something that has been bothering him. Uh, over his, uh, I, I, I don't know how old he is, uh, since he was born, he cannot get an answer to this, uh, to this, uh, mathematics, I don't even know where, maybe from China, but he want an answer today, and we will give him the answer. Uh, we give him that answer.
I'm using two thousand.
If you under, if, if you understand what he says, you can also raise your hand up and, uh, give him the, the answer that he need. While others are supporting, uh, A P M's speech.
If you want to support A P M, don't, but, some aggression, so that my head, look what they do.
So, A P M just, uh, finished addressing us, and there is also something I want to point out in, uh, some of the points that he raised. It took me back to religious people. There is this, uh, lesson we, we are taught by uh, by, uh, uh, Christ. The parable of the Sower, I think many of us must have, uh, read that or come across it. The parable of the Sower taught us about a certain merchant. On his trip. He dish out some dough, some money to his servants. He gave some hundred thousand, he gave orders fifty thousand, he gave some even one billion. Maybe naira, it could be naira, because then what is happening today must have happened there, so it could be naira that he gave out to these people. Some he gave, uh, I think, ordinary ten thousand. All of them were supposed to invest with this money, this funds given to them. Ironically, the one that got the highest of the sums, what did he do? I think he just, uh, dug ground and buried the money, the money giving to, uh, giving to him. Saying that he will save this money until the master come back, the master will now held in that he preserved this money given to him. The others, he gave hundred thousand, also invested, but said did not invest it rightly. But the one that got the least of the amount was the one who invested that money properly. And generated enormous return. The funny thing in that situation is that he that, that mod was expected from did nothing. The others did presumably, uh, little, very little. Oh, believing, yeah, they were allowed, they were given enough money, they can do it, and wait, the master. When the master come, at least he will be satisfied that the, the money was not lost. But the one that got least was the one who invested that money. That is exactly where we are today. Dear friends, many of us were entrusted to do much. But we decided to keep lying. We remain where we are, hoping when the master came out, our Onyeh, our Prime Minister. Those are our masters that are now in Italy. And they have invested so much on us. Hoping and believing that when they come back, we will all present them a befitting return. So please, don't sit back. Don't still think you are going to wait until Onyeh do come out. You are going to wait until Prime Minister come out, and he will come out to do what? To love you for doing nothing? No, they are not going to be happy with you. Now is the time for you to show them the love, the resilience that they have been teaching us about. Come out now and do the needful, so that these men will be proud of us when they come out. Better still, we have no reason to abandon our soldiers. That is what is all about, please, for many of us that have been going to judge. That is the parable of the Sower. Or you is happening today. Invest and invest justly for your master to love you. Thank you, dear friends, honorable. Emelika. You are welcome, your hand has been up, I hope.
Yeah, yeah, yes, 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 thank you, honorable, okay, and there were. Yes, my A P M is always on the ball, he's always on the point. And the point he has made today in us, has always been what we needed to know, well, ma- many of us know this. But some of us are pretending we don't know. And I thank him for stressing those points. And, um, on behalf of Omona and also Bridge U S A, I also, uh, we're coming with that speech with the sum of a hundred Ajema, making it two hundred Ajema today. Thank you very much, and there were.
Uh, I beg, I, I will call you after, honorable Emelika, when you tell me the express way to that, to Monna. I'm coming, I'm coming, the others in this night.
And I will send you your receipt in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, honorable.
All praises, all praises.
Yes, uh, so, why Jesus, if you are done with your question, you put down your hand, please, and let, uh, Onyose, uh, go, uh, go on.
Why Jesus, have you seen your question on the screen?
Yeah, your question is out in the screen, Maori, we need to read it.
Yes, you are going, you are going more the rights, then you are going answer.
Okay, um, another update from aware it states. Matt Mwa, five thousand Aj. Is anybody hearing me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Matt Mwa, Matt, M A T H.
Okay.
Matt Mwa, five thousand Aj.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, thank you, my Zimat. Thank you, so, um, uh, Namak, are you trying to join? Or because I, I don't understand why you're going off and on, are you the one, or?
I guess network.
Uh, just guide each other now, or, or one of those trying to. Uh, okay, so, uh, thank you, thank you, Onyose. Please, more hands up, and there is, uh, uh, a puzzle here, you can see it on the screen. Why Jesus want answer to this question? If you know it, you would come up, if you answer it correctly, he will pay five thousand Aj for you. If you get it wrong, well, everywhere.
As Emelika, your hand is still up.
I think it's the odd one.
Thanks, Onyose, your hand is still on. Oneye, your hand is still on? Good.
Great. And support the A P M speech. Support his tour to Aluda. Support our liberation forces. As I beg, I want to support A P M's speech with fifteen thousand Aj, please.
Oh, well done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, up to five.
We 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 reach Supreme Court.
I support him, I support him, I support him.
I de-ru Supreme Court in this case.
No problem. One nation.
I can do well, I can do well.
Okay.
Sorry, network focus on up at the other line, so I will let them phone now. From here, like I said, if two, two add to one is twenty-one. Three add to one is thirty-one. Four add to one is forty-one. Then one add to one is eleven, so the answer is eleven. Thank you.
Okay.
Wow. Nine, 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 nine.
I I I think your language. Why did us intentionally? Your language is mathematically wrong. It didn't say two add to one, it said two and one.
I see that is an error that I discovered. And I want to say that I have a mind and what is.
What is missing, if you get the formula, you get the answer. The formula is hidden. I can't get away, I think my hand is still up, sir.
Uh.
I have a.
I thought you just said give me your answer, remember.
I have an audit.
Okay, go on.
Yeah, she from Canada, Sister Yunes.
Yeah.
She's still writing. Ten thousand Naira, ten thousand AJ for Kula Nots. Twenty thousand AJ for, to support APM speech. Thirty thousand AJ to support the BLA. For now, that is what remain, but they say still money here, but he still telling me how much. I will come back later when she finish.
But the one you have now is how much?
The one I have now here is eh, ten, twenty, thirty, which is eh, sixty thousand so far.
Okay. Just tell, just tell.
All right, I can, all right, I can.
Yeah.
Go on, ay, ay, you're the idiot, ay, you're the idiot. You'll tell her.
Yes, you have, I have one more attempt, one more attempt, I think iPhone, I can then we, we break, we break it down.
Logical digestion. Logical digestion?
We need all, both logical and illogical, that is eh 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 any one of them that can lead us to the answer.
The answer is a gemma.
Yes.
This is not from the answer.
The update is still, still on.
That is answer of logical digestion.
The update is.
Please, I own a, own a happy economy, her own case is eh eh is about getting something eh 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 something special. Because not knowing the answer is even double. Okay, no, no, okay, no, sorry, next, I take it back.
I have an update here, Mazi okay.
Uh uh ma, uh nah ma, wait, wait, I want somebody that is eh attempting to solve.
Okay, update is better, update than Parcara.
Am I going to need your support to not knowing the answer?
Unguano. Unguano, Barasangiru, Unguano.
Oh gosh, okay. Eh um, who could the number, eh eh, good, who could the number, I'm up for answer, eh eh, good.
What did I mean, I feel wrong, I have five, five times, five times, I'm keeping the record.
Eh eh, eh. Okay, come on, we twenty, twenty eh gemma, eh eh, well, think who the number, sorry. Who the number, Paraya? Die, die.
The number, Paraya.
I was in Paraya from the other one, I paid my brother one. But it's a.
Yeah, gemma. So yeah, that I don't know.
It's a more Paraya. Who am I, Paraya?
It's eh twenty thousand.
Some more, Paraya? Eh.
Twenty eh gemma. Twenty eh gemma.
One nation. What is that, man, he was there, he was quite good, eh eh.
I look at a question, and eh eh if you have one, also be preparing. Because eh we are going to attempt to all the puzzles that eh remain unsolved till it. Yeah, I can wait. If you have, if you have yours, eh put it, put it out. You can even use yours to bail yourself from a wrong eh answer, but eh there's no guarantee. We decide that later, eh but we decide that whether you use your question to bail yourself some time.
What is the monetary eh eh value of eh failure?
Monetary eh hundred thousand eh gemma, hundred thousand, wait.
Mazi, okay, I took what I have, monetary value of failure, five, five thousand AJ.
Okay, okay. Who would you make, you make a mayor, mayor eh ten thousand AJ, just a bama, you make a two, just a bama. I don't know who the.
Okay, failure, failure is ten thousand AJ.
Okay. At first, it's eh understanding the question, eh that is, that is the problem, eh you know, why these are just so. T on your line, baro, baro, balonisi, so eh 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 it's bad. So please, eh who is next? Um eh. Chris and then eh.
Victor, no, so, no, so, no, so, never try, never.
Okay, Victor, you're welcome. But Mazi, you are, you are unmuted, you're welcome.
Okay, okay. Now, Ludo, Gueno.
Oh, Caro, Caro.
Oh, I am one of the Afra, I have been on Aludo stage today.
Yes, you do. Go, 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 lao.
I'm very good. I am who I, I who I want here, I am who I also, I must support to Alu, Aludo with fifty thousand AJ matter.
Oh, no, no.
I'm wow.
Animal, animal, whom, whom them, I see my brothers and sisters. I say, I'm a sick, I'm a sick, no, you're no, you're obla, sister, I kill you. Eh eh, who could the number? And eh Mazi, I'm major here, oh yeah, now, I guess, now that our brother, one night, I work, I hope, there at that time. All the kitchen has here, freedom for all, all I need, I need, let not together, now Finland, so always go eh one night, okay. It might go sometime, I be, I know, there are different names. So. So, AJ fifty thousand AJ, now supporter Aludo, now Ludo, she, eh, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to say to you, I'm not gonna call you here in the first June, we gonna talk about that. I give a motion.
You can send the one notice, you can send the one notice.
So what, Mr. Opa, Mr. Opa, she don't know, um, um, I'm getting it here. Opa, opa.
Okay. We're expecting, we're coming, we're coming.
Open up, buddy, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, yes, so you can decide, eh if any of these are have to give us the answer now, so that come up with another question. Another question that eh is coming up.
Everyone, everyone update, update, please.
Okay.
Yes, like I was saying before, one that Yunes from Canada have eh, other than other people. Ten thousand Kula Nots. Twenty thousand AJ for APM speech. Thirty thousand AJ for BLA. Ten thousand AJ for Mazi America. Five thousand AJ for, you, my, I want to, one, my. Five thousand AJ for Wadaro's. Eighty thousand Naira AJ. Thank you, that's my.
Thank you, thank you. One day, Yunes, email now, thank you so much, we are proud of you.
One day, Yunes, email now, thank you.
Yeah, what?
Eh, I think eh let us refresh a bit. So that eh. Let us refresh a bit. Yeah. Okay, you, we are now in eh support APM with quiz. Eh quiz. Your knowledge is God watch. So eh the process is eh, if you ask eh a non-incredible question, you pay. If eh somebody give a wrong question, eh wrong answer, he pay. If you cannot calculate well, you pay. So eh whichever way, even if you don't know the answer, you pay. I think I'm being fair, fair enough.
If you know the answer, you pay, you don't know the answer.
If you know the answer, that is you pay, you know that, even if you. So eh I think eh one of these are so come up with the answer, so that we take up the next question.
I want to greet everyone. Ah, let me see some opportunity before, let's. And eh thank. And eh we want to make a move. As eh Beafra put in the. Want to consolidate in a Beafra. Making sure that we create active awareness. Is that any eh state administrator that is not in the state admin should please put them drawing hands. Let us make this thing to have root, solid root in the homeland. So, having said that, all the that is necessary, if we go to the Ministry of Eternal Affairs platform, you will see what we have penciled down, look at it, and it see how you can create something that will give us massive response. I want to have eh a fundraising national, we have about one thousand people. We want to see that eh any state that is doing fundraising like this, we have up to hundred, two hundred people, that time I will be very, very happy. So I want us to have this eh in our mind. Eh, then, having said that, if we look at that, what I have said there, you see two and the one. You see one. Three and the one. You see thirty-one. Four and one is forty-one. Now. Eh this is just what we call quantitative add, add, add to the what? One and one. You see that there's appearance of T in every of, another one adding. So what should be?
One, one.
One. But eh the person that is calculating it maybe want to make it to sound too sweet. He said he's eh, eleven, but eh it is one T. One, because all of the figures until ninety, ninety-one will be T one. Every other thing be T one, T one, why would one and the one be eleven? One and one should be one T one. So if your answer is not one T one, please pay us.
I think I got it eh.
Eh eh, you got it, but I would have allowed you to explain.
Ah, no, ah, okay, I, I will, you can see, you can see.
The, the thing is, you may try, eh, you have four, you may try, eh, you have four. Having attempted, eh, you have four.
Ah, so, so, eh, well, eh, well, eh.
Tell her, Gemma, it's how much?
If you try two times, eh, you have four times.
I say eh, to be honest, why did us, I don't know how you got this eh one and one, and then eh come into something to algebra, to character, to.
Barasangiru, I need an attorney, I need an attorney.
What do you?
I need an attorney, Barasangiru.
Go to court.
I, eh.
I want to sue him for mis, for misleading us.
If your answer is not one T one.
So my, my, my own was eh gotten out of a expo, is it what you all mean?
Don't eat.
All the, all the, Daniel, give us our money, oh.
No, 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 no problem, eh, no, no problem.
Right off the limits.
I beg, well, I, this is honest, and don't come with this kind of eh, this, this kind of question, no, I beg, eh, get asked, eh. And eh.
That, that clever won't be that. Very clever.
So, please, watch carefully. The next question.
I really think. Okay, fine, like game we played last time during the, is it during eh USA home meeting? Ah, that game was very, very sweet. Eh, something like that, kudos, bring something like this up whenever we gather, it's good. Eh, you know, at least we can be cracking and eh, you know, everything that we generate, money, 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 I will need. So please eh.
Yes.
My own, add it to ninety eh gemma, it will be hundred eh gemma, so please eh eh good morning here, thank you, sir. Adam.
Thank you, so the eh, the next comes up, so watch carefully. If you get eh 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 papers and eh this, you can take notes.
Ma, Mazi, okay, let me get this eh. iPhone, iPhone, say add eh, who is this iPhone?
Eh, I'm here.
iPhone is eh.
Barasangiru.
iPhone is eh, eh, zero.
Okay. It's eh add eh thirty what?
Oh, I've redeemed it already, oh, yeah.
And that was it, now the thirty plus fifteen, but eh before, which made it eighty.
Okay, which has been redeemed already. And then I have twenty again, twenty eh gemma, that is, that I'm here to redeem.
For answering eh the question too fast.
Yes.
No, no, for not knowing the que, not knowing the answer.
Eh eh, and, and telling, who could the number, eh. Eh eh, yes, oh, yes, 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 that is double, double fine, correct you.
As the twenty thousand eh gemma, eh, J has eh been related to. So, altogether, we'll be hundred, hundred eh gemma.
Yeah, eighty has been redeemed, eh what I'm owing now. Yeah, I've redeemed eighty, but eh, I've not redeemed all, everything will be hundred eh gemma, not redeem any, tomorrow, everything will redeem, thank you. Bye for now, is eh please, okay, thank you so much.
Yes, okay, so eh eh just pay eh attention. Pay attention. So the next question will be from here. Take note of states and their capitals, you have thirty seconds' time. Is it coming up?
No.
Okay, I'm.
Okay, it's out now.
Eh, sorry, I think I have, I have to start, I have to start, I have to start eh, I have to start up again. Eh, I'm taking on too fast. So, okay, you have at the five seconds' time. So I think the time is up. So now, the question is. Which states surround Ebube? How many are there? Did you get the question?
Ye- yes.
Yeah, so eh you have all seen, watched the map. Eh you have, you had eh enough time to do that. Eh now. Mention all the states that surrounds Ebube and their capitals. Who laughed, who, who, who laughed in the class, eh, who laughed in the class?
Oh, why, my now. Oh, why, oh my, oh, why, damn, why you that?
Then there are about four or five states that surrounds a capital territory. And their capitals. Eh eh, difficult, okay, and then let's do it eh, yeah, well. Let us, let us help it. I know it's, it's good, it's called without expo.
Should it be eh, should we just mention one, one, or?
Eh, you can, eh you can, eh you can give all the answers, you can give all the answers, if you like, another person have to eh try. Another person have to give his ass.
Okay, SSG, eh, try first.
Yeah.
It's a, I should try first. Let me cut this way. We have Aludo. We have Okiwu.
If you are watching some eh eh, I will know, if you are watching something, the eh 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 the eh place has been set, you don't need to watch any other thing in your gadget. I know a lot of you are smart, smarter than me, oh.
Do I go ahead?
Go ahead, make it fast, so that another will eh will give his, without allowing time for expo, yeah.
We have Okiwu, we have Aludo. We have Opey. We have eh 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 boy. I think that's the mark.
I finished? Why did I, we don't have good time, we have to give you eh eh answer. Sweet.
Okay.
You are done? You are, you already failed, you already failed, you already failed it, so another person can try? Who want to try? Our capital is supposed to be famous and will be known by everyone of us here. Maybe before I even put that question out, I already know the host days, even the counties and the, the everything eh that's. But don't ask me, don't ask me to, to say that. Okay, we are all, okay, okay, we are, okay, let's, eh, give us, please eh twenty minutes. Any attempt?
No.
Okay. So only eh my Jesus, that eh eh failed it, let me eh put it back. Let me put it back.
Make a, make a try.
Okay, try, try, you, you, you have, you.
Eh. Eh, anyway, anyway, I'll answer. I'll answer it, cool. Have it?
And now, go, go on.
Don't say why be.
And where Aludo? Okay, no, Aludo, Aludo, they won't give bond. I'll answer eh Okiwu. Okay, what there?
You go on, eh eh, are you accenting Jilato?
There you got me. Eh, then eh Okiwu and then eh eh, okay, eh, the good side is a long soft. Long soft, Okiwu and eh.
Australia, Rank. People should, eh, you people should pay attention to OBJ questions. The, the question is, mention these states and capitals and their capitals. Yeah, all mentioning, but it's all, it's okay, eh, if already failed eh, but of you. Eh, any other before we bring out the answer? Okay, eh, so the let's go to the screen again. So this is the capital. You have eh
surrounded it.
You have Aludo. You have Okiwu. You have this number four is eh, this number four is eh Odumewu. Eh, it hasn't eh written, then you have Ikamba. You have Ezani. And you have anyone. So eh, it's eh one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, seven states. So for the capitals, that will be for eh another day. Eh, don't ask me eh that, that will be eh in a practical, practical eh exam that will come up next day.
So which are the same between Ikamba and Okiwu?
Eh, it's between Ikamba and Okiwu, Olo.
No, no, no.
Okay, Ikamba, 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 between Ikamba, eh, that is Odumewu.
Okay, that's all.
And that's it, it's Odumewu, yes.
Okay, okay. Wow. Okay, Aludo by eh Abreba.
Sorry. Olo.
Let's see, Aludo, no, Aludo is by Abreba.
Yes.
Eh, boundary with eh.
Ed.
With Ed, not, not eh, Abreba, is it, Abreba, no.
No, in Aludo, I mean in Aludo or Abreba.
No, 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 that is eh Isoji.
Is it? Aludo has towards Isoji, Uthuru side.
That is Isoji, Uthuru. Here, eh, this place is eh Isoji, Uthuru, yeah. Then here is eh Abreba, eh, close to where the Eda capital is, there are, there are, I don't know about there. So eh, eh, so that eh, that is it. So, uh um so that is, that is it. Only, only two attempts with failures, let's uh take note.
But Okiwu is there now.
Okiwu is there.
Uh we, we mentioned that.
Yeah, yeah, uh that is, that is the end, that is the end of, that is the end, we are almost uh done. Um sorry. Uh the next uh will be uh A P M closing, if he's uh around, let's call up him to, for his closing remark. I don't know if uh Minister of Information have something to tell us. If he's still here.
Is A P M not there?
Uh A P M left before, I don't know if he's engaged, there's nowhere.
Okay. Where are we on the program, are we on the ending path?
Yeah, closing remarks, uh should be closing remarks.
Okay. All right.
My Minister of Information, why you, you boy say they not arrest you for America?
If, if not for America, they even arrest myself, you know for good.
Yes, sir.
Uh from there now, I will have the opportunity to see my honorable Rep. Milike. I will have the opportunity to see my A P M. I will have the opportunity to see all the reps and admins that are in uh America.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
If, if there is anything, if there is any government that want to arrest me, they should wait for America to arrest me first before any other government will come. Because uh I want to be in America and ask uh Donald Trump, why he must arrest freedom fighters who are fighting to liberate their people.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Aludu Kueno. Aludu Kueno. Aludu.
Sorry, one update please, one update please. Um Wada Uju from Germany, you continue a gemma to pick uh color.
Wada Uju?
Uju, yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Yeah.
Fifty?
Twenty a gemma.
Twenty.
Twenty a gemma, ah she says on behalf of Ikemba, Ikemba.
Okay, that's all right, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Aludu Kueno. Thank you, Aludu, Aludu won the most viable state in the first quarter of twenty twenty five. And um they are running to clinch that uh trophy again. And the second quarter we are watching, so every other state wake up. That uh Aludu do not carry everything, leave them, if, if Aludu carry everything finished, leave you, waiting to go con carry.
Last now.
Waiting to con carry, you won't be last last. So we appreciate the executives and the citizens of uh Aludu. You guys have been very strong behind the government since after the detention of A P M. The unwavering support and stand that you guys have uh demonstrated is what every other state should emulate. We appreciate everyone that came in. We appreciate all the heroes and heroines of our time. We appreciate our leaders who are appearing in court on daily basis to represent Biafra. Our heroes who are sacrificing on daily basis for us to have a home called Biafra land. And we want the enemies of Biafra. And those that uh they don't see what we are doing. That they should start making report when they see all the wutu wutus that the Biafra defense forces are doing. Yesterday, combined zoo and uh Cameroonian terrorists. By target that came to kill our Biafrans was brought down by the Biafra navy.
Wow.
Why are you guys not reporting it?
Mm hmm, wow. Wow, I've not heard that, I didn't read it anywhere.
Okay.
They don't report such, they don't.
That is why we, the Biafran people, we need to make our reportage. When they don't report about you, it's because they don't want to validate your news, so that the entire world will not hear it. So you have to, in another way, report your news and make it to go viral. And for the entire world to be drawn to the attention of this, the wutu wutu must continue.
Yes.
And the wutu wutu continue, this time, maybe they will be crying, shouting on a. Um. Okay, Chukung Kere, before they were shouting on Simon Eba. This time, when they will shout on Okay Chukung Kere, we, we will tell you, show us where Okay Chukung Kere is doing anything in Biafra land.
Mm hmm.
The people that are doing the thing, you hear them speak, I, I want Biafra, I want Biafra. Give us Biafra or you leave Biafra land, so waiting Okay Chukung Kere do you? See this Biafra, our Prime Minister had promised them, we will bring this freedom from exile.
Yes.
Because freedom is not in Nigeria. If freedom was in Nigeria, we would have sat down on the table, signed documents, and then we go our ways. But the freedom is not there. And let us remind those that say, they don't see us in the homeland. When the Queen of England forcefully amalgamated all of you into the contraption that you are suffering today, was she in Nigeria to do it?
I said, no.
She was in exile doing it, have you? They were representatives in Be- in Biafra land and in the entirety of Nigeria, right, to do it. And it was done properly. That is where all of you are. You see this Biafra, like our A P M said, we will stay in this exile. And lock the two of your legs into one bucket. And then this Biafra will be fully liberated, we are there. We're doing it on daily basis. This is not time for choo choo choo, this is time for actions. And we need a gemma to make all this wutu wutu to speak the bigger volume. Everywhere we go, the world wants to see the problem that you have been created to solve another problem. Because problem of inversion takeover has been created. For us to solve this problem, we need to create a counter problem. That is more momentous in nature than the one that has existed. Nobody will talk more, now Newton law, I talk am.
Mm hmm.
Hmm. Said to every force, it must be opposite, eh? But that one, we are meeting equal, we are telling you more greater force to be able to get the reaction. So we are creating the reaction of everybody to talk and acknowledge Biafra. If you are in the media, we warn again. Stop destroying your images, because you may think that you are destroying the images of B R G I, but you end up destroying your image. The Biafra Defense Forces, the B R G I, and every form. And nature that we have to use to destroy the zoo, they are happening. But if you are blind and deaf and dumb, you will not see what we are doing. Because you did not appreciate it when Prime Minister was here. Or i- is it the Prime Minister that will speak from morning till night? They will still say he's a Garama. Today is not yet, is it okay in Kere now, that is A P M, that you will now acknowledge more than the Prime Minister? So if you did not acknowledge God, how will you acknowledge Jesus, talkless of his angels?
Hmm.
So, if you love God, do his commandment, but you're not doing his commandment. The Prime Minister told everybody, fall back, align with B R G I, give them all your support, so that we can do what? Get the recognition of Biafra and for B D F to liberate Biafra land. Which one are you doing, you are in the media, you're using your platforms to propagate nonsense. Be careful, because you are disgracing yourself. If Biafran people are saying what we are doing, you work from the lobbying and going to the terminal. The defense forces that, as some of you do not even want to use your platform to do publicity for fundraising, they are working strong. You can't even spend one hour to do publicity and awareness for fundraising or town hall meeting. You can't even post the flyer of fundraising, you can't even post the flyer of on all meeting. What are you doing?
And they are asking for uh accountability and asking what are we doing?
Okay. You can't post flyer of fundraising, you can't post flyer of. And yet, you're the one questioning A P M and B R G I and Biafra Defense Forces what they are doing. You are sleeping and snoring. Eh, yesterday, the Biafra defense was in the Nepal wing. Alright, good night. Engaged the terrorists and then brought down their aircraft that they came to finish Biafrans. But you are sleeping, snoring, when you wake up, you come to the media and say, they have had event for you, they are not doing anything. B R G I are not doing anything, you are not doing anything. Is it, is it not to carry back? Oh, if it is the bag of our A P M that he carries to do Gaiman, I in the vexuna, make or not follow go carry back, make we see now. We want to see the faceless people that will be talking about people that carry back, people that carry back, we see them physically, nobody so. We see our A P M physically carrying the pack, boldly, walking into Washington, having meetings. You people are talking from behind.
The same people that carry back is the same people that they beg for money.
Mm hmm, mm hmm, okay. Anyway, we appreciate Biafra, those that are making things happen since after the convention. Thank you all that have not joined the calm of destruction to destroy this government. And I wonder if the A P M. With the entire B R G I cabinet had allow you people to destroy the Biafra Defense Forces and finish. The Biafra government in exile and finish, where will you be coming to criticize now? Since you're on the criticism side, what will you say to criticize? Because you have not contributed anything, you're just on defense to criticize, but you cannot contribute anything to move us forward. You guys can make your money on the media, but this is from using Biafran government as your topic. By the time I open that package, by the time I turn the radar from where we are, you people. Biafrans will put you pull in the trash, huh? Our focus is on our defense, our focus is on our uh political and diplomatic lobbying. We don't want to have time for idiot. Idiot is described as people that do not care about how far people are destroying the government. How far people are destroying the Biafra Defense Forces, how far people are destroying the template of B R G I. Idiot are people that only care about how much they make from their social media platform on talking every day. They are only looking at the metrics of how much they make this month, how much they make the other month. The kind of video, the kind of propaganda, the kind of topic they need to use to, that they can drive more traffic, these are idiot. Who do not contribute anything to the government. Flyer of fundraising, you cannot post. Okay, maybe when you post that one and you see that every other people post, they will not pay you for that one, or maybe they will sanction your account. Because you have posted something other people post. You only have to privatize so that you can make your money. Biafran government is what you will use to shred on the table. Is this though? Every Biafran in the media, please, appreciate the work of the Biafra Defense Forces, share all their works. Few days ago, I made announcement and I said, do less of the talking. But post more of the works of the Biafra Defense Forces. Let it spread everywhere so that we can convince Finland government, convince the international community. And one Nigeria also to see that in the absence of our Prime Minister, which they had a claim that is the one responsible for us freeing ourselves. I don't know how you will say one person is responsible for us to free ourselves against the terrorism. So you're telling us that without this one person, we will all put our heads down and tell the terrorists to use axe and cut our heads off because we are useless, have you? So what we do now will free our leaders. That is why the Zoo Court do not have anything to say about our Supreme Leader. So hundred judges and courts will be doing the trial from January to December, when they are tired, they will come out. Attorney General of Nigeria who said today, eh we have finalized the installation of Simon Eba to Nigeria in no reach twenty four hours. Oh eh, I did not say so, we did not do, we are not concluding, we are not making such statement, are you tired of it, starting him? You people wanted his head on the spike, are you guys tired? Oh, you guys doesn't need to be tired, because the plan was that in the absence of Prime Minister, Biafrans will be totally wiped off. But the difference has become the case. So airborne to the Biafra Defense.
Airborne.
Airborne. To the Biafran. Airborne. To the Biafran. And airborne to be as.
Airborne.
Airborne to be R G I.
Airborne to be a jury.
Airborne to Biafrans in the homeland.
Airborne.
To Biafrans in homeland. Recently, the Biafran people in the homeland has paid off. We salute everybody from Aludu, they were from here, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Honorable Minister, thank you.
Yeah, I think that was the last thing on the agenda.